Ready whenever you are.
Okay, um, we'll call a meeting to order. Let's take roll call.
Mr. Hilsinger?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Yeah.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
So we have a total of six.
You have six.
At this time.
Although. Okay, yes. That is the quorum for tonight.
Our newest commissioner is not here.
She is not on yet, but I will, I'll watch for any of the rest of the commissioners to join in.
We will welcome her to, uh, the planning commission whenever she gets here, so.
Yes.
Uh, with that, we need a motion to accept a meeting minutes from the executive meeting, March fourth, and the meeting minutes for the public hearing, March eleventh.
All moved?
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Six, zero. Um, we do not have a status sheet. No committee reports. They'll go to the first new business item, which is PC oh eight dash twenty-four Omaha Collision Company.
Alright, good evening commissioners. This is PC oh eight dash twenty-four Omaha Collision Company LLC. A request for an amended development in C eight planned commercial district to permit the use of a vehicle repair facility. This is a four point zero four acre tract on the south side of Manchester Road, approximately fifteen hundred feet west of Mason Road. The site is in West County and on the aerial is bounded in red. On the larger aerial, you can see the site on Manchester with commercial activity characterizing both sides of the street. This is a request for an amended development in the C eight planned commercial district to allow for a vehicle repair facility. This site was formerly Gettaker's Furniture Store and still retains the facade and lot structure. The building on the site is thirty-five thousand four hundred thirty square feet and features a loading area in the rear. There's also parking on the western side of the parcel. In two thousand eleven, this site was the subject of PC thirty dash eleven Asbury Automotive Group, a request for an amended development in C eight to allow for a vehicle sales and repair facility on the property. This was adopted by county council in January two thousand twelve. However, this use was never developed and the Gettakers' building remains. So this site and many surrounding are zone C eight planned commercial district. This allows the planning commission to have greater flexibility in the design of the site and the conditions of development. In the preliminary site development plan shown at public hearing, the petitioner indicated reuse of all of the existing structures and entrances at the site. The petitioner is proposing a twenty-seven hundred square foot building addition to serve as an intake and office area. The existing paved parking lot would be restriped with one hundred sixty-one parking spaces and parking lot islands would be introduced. The south side of this parcel is an existing detention basin in the flood plain of Grand Glaze Creek. No changes are proposed. The petitioner also noted that the Missouri Department of Transportation has planned work along the site to replace and widen the existing sidewalk along Manchester Road. Uh, the petitioner also submitted a preliminary landscape plan with extensive landscaping along Manchester and on the parking lot islands. There are a total of forty-seven trees and three hundred seventy-six shrubs and grasses depicted. Again, no changes are proposed to the detention basin. And finally, the petitioner submitted preliminary architectural elevations depicting the exterior of the building. At public hearing, the petitioner emphasized the office-like structure and commitment to matching the existing materials of construction on the existing building. The department is recommending approval of this request. A vehicle repair facility continues to be an appropriate use of the site and is consistent with other uses along Manchester Road. Additionally, the materials shown at public hearing are generally sound. The department is recommending three revisions to the site development plan seen at public hearing. First, the department agrees with MoDOT's recommendation dated February eighth to close the eastern curb cut. The petitioner indicated that traffic volumes for this proposed use are low, so the closure of a curb cut on Manchester Road would create a safer pedestrian environment. This would also be compatible with MoDOT's upcoming planned work to improve the safety of the site. Second, while there are no requirements for buffer yards between two commercial sites, the department is recommending a landscape buffer along the western property line to further improve the appearance of the site. And finally, the department recommends replacing the existing sign on the property with a monument-style sign to reduce visual sign clutter on Manchester Road. Um, at this time, I would like to call for a motion.
Mr. Hilsinger, I would note that, um, Ms. Williams, Mr. Fagan, and Mr. Bedell have joined the meeting.
Alright, um, we'll welcome our newest commissioner to the planning commission. Hope you enjoy it. Now, with that, we'll, uh, continue on. Uh, we need a motion on PC oh eight dash twenty-four.
Make a motion for approval.
We have a second?
Second. This is Sandy.
Uh, discussion, anyone?
And Wade, just to confirm, that would be with the recommended SDP revisions?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Any discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. What's your count now?
You have all nine members of this.
Erveta, Ms. Williams, did you want to cast a vote? Or you could, you could abstain at this time. I just want to make sure I have that clear on the minutes.
I think you might be muted.
Oh, I can't hear you.
We can count Ms. Williams as an abstention for this evening.
Thank you.
We'll change the count to, uh, eight zero one. We have no old business ready for action. Uh, we'll go to old business. Letters for approval. First item, PC oh three dash twenty-four Black Tree Association LLC.
Good evening, PC oh three dash twenty-four Black Tree Association LLC. It was a request for a conditional use permit in the R five and floodplain R five residential district um, for a proposed use of a private, non-for-profit recreational land uses, including outdoor recreational sports fields and associated lighted athletic fields for fourteen point one-two acres located on the northeast and southwest side of Mount Olive Road, approximately two hundred sixty feet west of Marchy Drive. Um, this is coming to you tonight as a letter of decision, which is consistent with the commission's um, vote from March fourth at your executive session.
Okay, we need a motion. So moved. Fagan. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Seeing no one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Eight zero one. Uh, next item, PC oh five and oh six dash twenty-four DP two forty-four East LLC.
Good evening commissioners. This is a letter of recommendation for PC oh five and oh six dash twenty-four VP two forty-four East LLC. A request for change in zoning from C six research and office district to R six residence district with a planned environment unit procedure in R six to permit multiple family residences. This is a five point four eight acre tract in the northeast quadrant of Thornhedge Drive and Valley Park Road, approximately one hundred feet south of Highway forty-four. As you can see, this site is in Southwest County and on the aerial is bounded in red. This larger aerial shows the single-family residences to the south and commercial uses along Highway forty-four. As commissioners may recall, this petition was last seen at the March fourth, twenty twenty-four executive meeting, where the planning commission recommended approval of these requests with the following provisions: increased landscaping buffer to forty feet and removal of parking spaces, increased landscaping buffer with along Valley Park Road, oh, sorry, I just read that twice, heightened requirements on lighting intensity within four, twenty feet of Valley Park Road and Booter Park, a traffic study and sidewalk along Valley Park Road, and aesthetic treatment of all proposed structures to maintain the semi-rural neighborhood characteristic. On March eighteenth, the petitioner submitted a revised preliminary site development plan and a written letter request, which is included in the packet, to modify these provisions. So, a request for increase in number of garage spaces, reduction in Valley Park Road buffer width, reduction in lighting intensity restrictions along Valley Park Road, and a waiver of the traffic study. On the revised plan, commissioners will note two detached garages and retention of parking spaces within the forty-foot buffer zone. These parking spaces are shielded by a six-foot site-proof fence. In total, approximately twelve parking spaces were removed. The petitioner also submitted architectural elevations featuring decorative cedar corbels and milled finishes. So the department finds the following recommendations reasonable. First, submitted architectural elevations are a reasonable aesthetic standard and all structures on the site not yet submitted should appear similar. Next, the department has revised the conditions of development to allow for an additional garage structure and parking within the forty-foot buffer so long as car headlights are shielded. Um, regarding the traffic study, the condition remains as directed by MoDOT and the County Department of Transportation. Uh, the intent of the lighting buffer onto Valley Park Road is to minimize light spillage onto the neighboring single-family properties. Since some parking spaces will be allowed within twenty feet of Valley Park Road, the department decreased the buffer to fifteen feet to allow for some flexibility in maintaining a safe and visible parking lot. And finally, the garages and shielded parking lots spots are permitted within the forty-foot landscape buffer, so no changes are necessary as the remainder of the area along Valley Park Road should still be landscaped to adhere to the original conditions of development recommended on March fourth. The department finds the following recommendations reasonable and consistent with the letter, or with the intent of the decision by the planning commission on March fourth. So we bring the letter of recommendation to you today with these revisions.
Okay, we need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion of approval of the, uh, planning department's recommendation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, anyone?
So just to clarify, the items that we are in, that, that the planning department has changed from their modified, modified request. That would be to keep the MoDOT study, modify the lighting buffer to fifteen feet.
Yeah, so all the things on the right column are the recommendations from the department.
Essentially, just like you summarized.
Yes, but that's correct, Ms. Hancock. Um, a slight reduction in the, in that lighting, um, maintaining the condition requiring a, um, a traffic study as per MoDOT and the Department of Transportation, uh, public works at their discretion. Um, but those are the two probably the largest changes to the, um, to the preliminary site development plan.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, eight zero one. Uh, old business not ready for action. We'll go on to, uh, correspondence.
Good evening. Uh, this first correspondence is, um, for PC oh seven dash twenty-four Private Home Care, um, which was a request before the planning commission for a conditional use permit in the NU non-urban district um, for a group home for the elderly on four point eight one acres um, on the south side of Lewis Road, approximately fifteen hundred feet east of Deki Road. They are requesting, uh, this evening a withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hold on, Wayne.
There's a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Without prejudice, that means that.
So it means, yeah, so basically what this means is if, um, the withdrawal without prejudice allows, like if somebody else wanted to come onto this site, um, within this next year for a different use, they would be able to come to the board, or with the same.
Basically, someone could make a request for a CUP for a group home for the elderly here. Um, otherwise, with prejudice would mean they'd be precluded from applying again for a year.
So if someone comes in there, wants to do the same thing, they would still have to go through the same process.
Exactly, right. They would, they would start with new application.
We're not shutting them down.
Yep, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Eight zero one. Uh, next item, communications, Todd Spitzer, PC twenty-six dash twenty-two forty-four oh one Merrimack LLC.
So this is PC twenty-six dash twenty-two forty-four oh one Merrimack LLC. Um, this is a request to amend ordinance twenty-eight thousand six hundred fourteen. The zoning on the site is a C eight planned commercial district. Um, and this request before you tonight is to amend the ordinance to allow an additional vehicle service facility. The tract size for the entire property is seven point two acres and is located northwest corner of Merrimack Bottom Road and Hawkins-Fouch Road. Um, this site is located in South County and to your right, you can see the site outlined in red. Um, here's a larger aerial of the site. This site is primarily surrounded, um, by some single-family homes, um, and RV sales, uh, directly behind it, um, and then the Missouri American Water Company. Um, so their request is to add an additional vehicle service center. Um, the service center will perform sensor checks on repaired vehicles. Um, so there will be no wrecked vehicles on the property and they do not intend to do overnight storage of vehicles. Um, this is the preliminary site development plan. Um, the site they're looking at is the forty-four oh seven E, um, is where the site would be for the sensors. The forty-five oh five E is the site of a existing vehicle service center on the site. So, uh, the department of planning is recommending approval as continued commercial use of the site is appropriate. The staff, staff also finds that the C eight planned commercial district procedure continues to be appropriate at this site as it continues to provide the county with a maximum control over the development. The proposed use, um, of a vehicle service center can be developed and operated in a manner that is not detrimental to the surrounding land uses. The proposed vehicle center is less intense, um, than a typical vehicle service center. And this proposed vehicle service center, um, will be housed in the rear of the site, which is in keeping with the intention of the original ordinance, um, to keep them off of Merrimack, um, and towards the back. So at this time, I ask for a motion.
Make a motion.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
First?
First was Mr. Elliott.
And Mr. Elliott, and then, yeah, and then Mr. Cunningham.
Okay, uh, discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Eight zero one. And the last one is, uh, PC one oh one dash seventy-seven Edgar H. Koeman.
Good evening commissioners. PC zero one dash seventy-seven Edgar H. Koeman is a request to amend ordinance eight, eight thousand five seventy-six, which is the guiding document for a C eight planned commercial district. The proposal before you tonight is to amend the sign regulation to be per C three shopping district on a five point eight, five point eight acre tract located in the southwest corner of New Horse Ferry Road and West Florissant Avenue. The site is in the North County and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. Okay, PC zero, PC one oh one dash seventy-seven was a request for a change in zoning from R two and R three residence districts to C eight planned commercial district to permit racquetball courts, retail spaces, and a freestanding building to allow all seats to permitted users. After a series of revisions, the commission considered the revised site development plan appropriate for the site, hence recommending approval. The county council concord adopting ordinance eight thousand five seventy-six. Of note is that this ordinance permitted three freestanding business signs per C two shopping district's requirements. There have been two amendments to the ordinance. The first was in nineteen eighty-four to allow seats to shopping districts uses related to retail, office, and service facilities, excluding service stations, automotive-related sales and services, fast food restaurants, and green rooms. The maximum height of the building was also amended not to exceed fifteen feet. In two thousand and five, the ordinance was amended to allow overnight parking of eight licensed trucks permitted for businesses within the shopping center. The proposed amendment before you tonight is to change the signage regulation of the C eight ordinance to be per the C three shopping district requirement. The petitioner has noted that variances have been granted in two thousand and five and two thousand and eighteen to maintain a narrow size of eighty-five square feet and eighty-seven square feet respectively in lieu of fifty square feet per the C two shopping district. Staff is recommending approval because the current request aligns with previous variances granted to the property in two thousand and five and two thousand and eighteen. Allowing the signage per the C three shopping districts would provide consistency and bring the sign on the sites to compliance. And at this time, ask for a motion.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve. Fagan.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Was there, sorry, was there a second on the motion?
I'll, I'll make a second for, on the motion.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None, let the record show eight zero one, and we'll go on to, uh, site plans.
Good evening commissioners. PC one thirty-eight dash seventy-six Saint Francis Development Company is a C eight planned commercial district. Um, this is a one point nine seven acre tract on the northwest corner of Limburg Boulevard and Old Horse Ferry Road. Um, as you'll probably recall, this site is in North County and there it is highlighted in red on the aerial. Um, the commission will recall seeing a, an ordinance amendment, um, at the, earlier this year to increase the, uh, size of the convenience store on this site. And so the site development plan shows a new, uh, twenty-six hundred square foot convenience store and eight parking spaces on the site. It also shows new landscape buffer yards along both, um, street frontages, which do not currently exist. And here's the lighting plan, which is all in accordance with the zoning ordinance requirements. And so we are recommending approval of this site development plan.
Okay.
I make a motion for approval.
We have a second?
Second, Fagan.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, eight zero one, and then we'll go to thirty-five and thirty-six dash twenty-two.
PC thirty-five and thirty-six dash twenty-two provisional land development was a request for a change of zoning from, from NU to R three with a PEU in R three on a two point seven acres located at the south side of Vance Road, approximately eighty feet east of Strawberry Ridge Drive. As you may recall, the subject site is in the South County and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. This is the, this slide shows the minimum lot size of five thousand square feet and setbacks, which are all consistent with the PEU ordinance. Here is a subdivision showing the proposed use for the site, which is for ten single-family detached homes, which are all consistent with the PEU ordinance. And this is also the landscape plan, just per the PEU ordinance to. Yeah, that's it. Yeah, so, ask for a motion for approval.
I'll move for a motion approval.
We have a second?
Second. Motion.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, eight zero one, and we will go for the good of the order.
Good evening commissioners. Uh, we've got a good one for you this evening. We're going to be talking about planned environment units for our monthly, uh, education session. Planned unit developments, PUDs or PUDs, rose to prominence in the United States following World War Two and the ensuing era of rapid suburbanization. A PUD is a special procedure that encourages increased aesthetic variation and residential density and the preservation of open space within residential subdivisions. This procedure remains common practice today throughout the country. Ordinarily, in Saint Louis County, a subdivision of land is governed by chapter ten oh five, the subdivision ordinance. Uh, design criteria required by that code work in tandem with development conditions dictated by chapter ten oh three, the zoning ordinance. It's important to note that neither the subdivision nor the zoning ordinance permit much flexibility regarding lot width, lot size, and other crucial design features. For instances when proposed residential developments require additional design flexibility, developers can request the planned environment unit, PEU, procedure. A PEU is Saint Louis County's form of PUD and is permitted for residential developments that have five or more lots or units. The PEU procedure allows for increased flexibility regarding housing type, lot size, and structures, structure slash parking setbacks, among other design considerations. A PEU can be used to cluster units to preserve environmental features such as a creek, pond, or wooded area. Uh, by clustering units, it is also easier to avoid natural constraints such as steep slopes and sinkholes. And also, uh, the PEU may also reduce impervious surfaces. This graphic illustrates the utility of the PEU procedure. At the top, you can see a hypothetical undeveloped parcel. The site is characterized by marshland, featuring a pond, prominent green space, and an active creek. The middle image shows how we would normally expect a residential subdivision to be laid out. However, the environmental conditions of the parcel inhibit this standard design. Utilizing the PEU procedure, the developer can propose single, single-family homes on the site in a fashion that both protects the new residences from the area's waterways and preserves the environmental features that make the area uniquely appealing. So how are PEUs permitted? PEUs are permitted in the NU non-urban district and all R residence districts. The PEU procedure does not allow for more units than, uh, that is ordinarily permitted in the underlying zoning district. Residential density, uh, for that number of permitted units is calculated by dividing the net area of attractive land by the minimum lot area per dwelling unit of the underlying zoning district. The PEUs containing forty units or more, uh, may include commercial uses in either separate structures or within multiple family residence buildings. Commercial uses shall not occupy more than five percent of the total gross floor area of all residential buildings within the development. The list of, uh, permitted commercial uses include barber or beauty shops, childcare centers, nursery schools, or day nurseries, cigar and newspaper stands, food or drugstores, laundry or dry cleaning pickup stations, self-service laundries or dry cleaning facilities, and finally, restaurants excluding fast food restaurants. Much like with other special procedures that come before the planning commission, design standards for PEUs are determined by site-specific ordinances. The planning commission may establish conditions that pertain to building and parking setbacks, enhanced landscaping requirements, height limitations, sign restrictions, fencing requirements, and other design features and criteria. Fencing requirements and other design features and criteria. When a developer requests the PEU procedure, the planning commission holds a public hearing. Following public hearing, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the county council regarding the request. Ultimately, the county council approves the PEU by approving an ordinance authorizing the development. Or the county council denies the petitioner's request. Within eighteen months of county council action, the developer must submit a site development plan to the Department of Planning for staff review. Following staff review, the planning commission approves the site development plan. The site development plan is then recorded. The developer has two years to record the first plat and eight years to record all plats associated with the development. Substantial construction must commence within one year of a plat's recording. In the event the site development plan is not submitted, the plats are not recorded. Or substantial construction has not commenced within the prescribed time limits. The planned environment unit shall terminate. And the planning commission shall initiate a resolution of intent, intent for the purpose of a new public hearing. To revert the property to its prior classification or other appropriate residence district classification.
I have a question for you. Uh, so can they ask for an extension for that like we've done on other ones or it is a strict timeline?
There is a procedure for requests for extension.
Okay. And one, one more question, Peter, if. Can the, can this, the, the planning department recommend this to a developer or is it totally in the developer's hands how they want to do that? They want to request?
I would say, I would say regularly staff has preliminary meetings with developers when they kind of come with their conceptual plans. And if there is. A situation where we think the PEU could be a useful procedure to help them facilitate their goals. And perhaps, you know, encourage some things that the, the department is interested in, especially around landscaping. And varied lot sizes, we will make that recommendation. But ultimately, it's the developer's choice then what they try and pursue.
And to build on what Peter is saying, he is correct, that is, we cannot require or force a property owner to go through that procedure. That is a, it is a voluntary procedure, but what I would say is, is that that is where the planning commission and the planning department always entertain. Legally appropriate applications and requests, but it is always within the. Purview of both the department and the commission to analyze those requests. And if they do not meet the requirements or, or sort of the goals of, of the county, it can reject those requests. So we do frequently counsel with property owners to say, while you can make a request that does not include a PEU, it makes your development much harder. To, to make, to facilitate, so we encourage, but we do not require.
Gotcha, thank you very much, thanks Peter.
One thing I wanted to add to and why I think it's becomes like it's an extremely popular procedure, if you go back and look at the zoning petitions for the past. You know, thirty, forty years, there are a lot of PEU subdivisions. Basically, everyone, you know, has to have stormwater management facilities and common. Facilities like that have to be located in common ground and then as soon as you've got a bunch of common ground you need, it starts to eat at that. Developable, developable land too. So this allows you to sort of retain some of that, you know, density of units, even though you have, you know, less land to work with.
What happens if they get halfway through a project and then for, for whatever reason they stop? And the time expires and all that and they pull, you said the plats wouldn't be recorded. What happens if people are already living and some of it in the other part isn't fully developed or isn't built out?
That's a great question, Mr. Elliott, you know, and the county. Had a lot of those occur after the twenty oh eight, after the twenty oh eight Great Recession. In terms of, and basically the, the, the sort of colloquial term is, are zombie subdivisions, subdivisions that have either been platted. Where no home builder will build. Or the, you know, all of the common ground wasn't, wasn't put in correctly or a developer built half the streets, but then abandoned it. Before they were accepted by Saint Louis County for perpetual maintenance. You know, we try to avoid that as much as possible, but that is when, why Saint Louis County establishes any time someone. Does a subdivision, whether it is through a PEU procedure or a standard subdivision, we do collect escrow monies from the developer. So that if Saint Louis County had to take over and finish. Or we, our departments wouldn't do it, we would contract with someone to make sure that at least the bare minimum of the roads that would service the homes that exist. Meet public standard, we have those monies to do so. But if a developer does abandon the development halfway through, we would have to work through making sure that those residents. Are still being serviced with public, with public services as appropriate. And sometimes try to help facilitate finding individuals that. Would take over that development. I don't know how, about anyone else, but here in Clayton, we are having the tornado sirens.
I have tornado.
It just, it just started here too in Webster.
There in Oakville also.
Yeah, and I just, I just looked at the radar, it doesn't appear, you know, south like the. It looks like it's in sort of north central Saint Louis County right now, but there's more storms that are moving through. So I don't mind, if we want to finish up, we just had a couple of extra minutes so that everyone can then get down to their basement. Or if there's anyone that needs to get to their basement right now, please do so.
Yeah, they're sounding in Eureka now.
Yeah, I think that the whole counties must be going off, although from radar, again, it looks like it's mostly confined just north and north, inner North Saint Louis County right now. So I would say, Mr. Cunningham, Ms. Williams, you may be the ones that are the most impacted by it right this second, so.
Yeah, what's strange is I don't hear any sirens.
Whoa.
But on the radar, the closest lightning strike is like a mile away, so.
Okay.
Did you want to touch on? Saint Louis County twenty fifty?
Yeah, there were just two quick things I wanted to, to do. First of all was, we didn't get to do it at the front, Ms. Williams, and I know that you've been having some, some audio problems, but I want to welcome you. To the Saint Louis County Planning Commission. This is a really, really excellent group of individuals who give of their time and talent to help promote. Good zoning practice and good planning practice for the residents of Saint Louis County and I'm, I'm really glad that you're here. And for the commission members, what you should know is that Ms. Williams comes with a really, really. Wide breadth and depth of experience in planning and zoning. She has worked for various municipalities at a, at a time about in the early nineties. She also was a staffer here at Saint Louis County in our Department of Public Works reviewing plans. She does have a background in architecture and she does run and own her own consulting business, which does deal with zoning. But she's got depth of knowledge in, in plan review, housing, economic development, so Ms. Williams is going to be a really great addition. And we're really glad that, that Ms. Williams is here. And on the flip side of that.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, I can hear, we can hear you now.
Yay! I did have questions, I finally figured out this audio, Webex has never liked my computer tablet. I don't know if Zoom interferes with it or what, so I've sat here playing with some settings. And finally, it's all working, so thank you very much, I'm very happy to be here and glad to be a part of this. Saint Louis County Planning Commission, some of the petitions and some of the site development plans you showed are right around the corner from where I live. So I'm like, yeah, neighbor's credit union, I'm driving past there all the time, so I'm looking forward to being a, a, a part of. Development and decisions that are happening in Saint Louis County.
That's, I really appreciate, yeah, welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. So, and I did have questions, but, but Jacob, I'll just ask you those offline later.
Okay, that sounds good.
About the PEU.
Sure, no, that's great. The, so the, so of, two things of note is that the next planning commission meeting is going to be our public hearing for the month of April. And Commissioners, you may have noticed that it is an odd date, it is, it is set for April twenty-second, it's Monday, April twenty-second. And the reason being is that we would typically have had it on April eighth, but as you all well know, that's also solar eclipse day. And I expect that there's a lot of folks from the Saint Louis region that are going to be heavily invested in that day, so we, we're not going to have it on eclipse day. And then for personal reasons in the department, Mel and myself are going to be at the National Planning Conference in Minneapolis on Monday, the fifteenth. So there would be no planning, neither the director nor deputy would be there. So we do have it set for April twenty-second, in-person public hearing for April. And at that time, we also hope to have a meet and greet with, with Ms. Williams. Here at the county, we'll have some snacks and some food so that we can all get together as a, in person and, and get to, get to meet one another. And also I want to put it on, we don't have a date yet, but we're working with Mr. Sneed to have a celebration of his time on the planning commission. I think we're going to, we're going to a restaurant, I think in South County where we are looking at Barilino's. Don't hold me to that until we have it fully set, but that's kind of where we're thinking we're going to have it. And when Mr. Sneed has determined the, the right date, we've given some dates to Mr. Sneed. We will let all of you all know so that you are all invited, so that we can celebrate and thank him for his dedication to, to this commission. So with that, I just want to also give the team. A little bit of background or, excuse me, an update on the comprehensive plan. So on Thursday, we had our first steering committee meeting for the comprehensive plan and I thought it went really great. Dr. Page came to the meeting and greeted the, greeted the steering committee. It is made up of twenty-five folks from throughout various sectors in Saint Louis County that represent. You know, thought leaders in housing, equitable, economic development, sustainability, transportation. Their names that you would know and recognize and they're not private at all, I'm happy actually to, to give you all the, the list of everyone who's on that steering committee. But we had a really great and robust conversation with, and getting them acclimated to their role. And throughout the comprehensive planning process. Additionally, we continue to work with AECOM on the existing conditions report. They have pulled together, I can't tell you how many maps and just how much data has been pulled together on the existing conditions for Saint Louis County. And in May, at your executive meeting, as we, we tentatively have planned for your executive meeting for. Them to be in town to present to you the existing conditions report. There's some really interesting narratives that we've already been able to pull out as it pertains to the county's population plateau, the age of our housing stock. How and where we're investing our monies. I think that there's some really, really great nar, well, really great narratives to talk about and to plan for coming out of this process. That, that then sets us up for, if this is where we are and the, we know that these are our opportunities to improve. To start creating that buffet of options about how the county should move forward into the, into the future. Public engagement is beginning this month, we are going to be doing both active and passive engagement with this. So our passive engagement is going to include engagement stations at multiple county libraries. The county health centers, county recreation centers, as well as some metro link stops. So we will have passive engagement stations in all council districts in Saint Louis County. And we're also going to begin the active public engagement. So that includes us going to tabling events and various things in person in the community in all seven council districts. Through the month of April and May, and we will give to you all and send to you as soon as we have it ready. A map and a schedule with all of those events that planning staff will be at. So that way, if you're in the, if you're in the neighborhood or something interests you, you can stop by and say hi. And, you know, listen if, as we talk to residents. And keep you all abreast of all of those sorts of things. The first thing we're doing is we will be Earth Day Festival that is in the city, but there's going to be a very heavy county contingent there. And we know that we'll be plenty of county residents going there. So, and also so you should know is that our statistically valid survey, we are sending that out to more than ten thousand residents in Saint Louis County. With the expectation and hope that over the next six weeks, we will get at least a thousand responses to help us create that statistically valid survey. And additionally, online, we will have a, an, a survey, an all-call survey as well. So we're trying to hit as many people as possible to hear as many perspectives as possible as we put all of this work together. So with that, I'd love to hear if you have any questions or anything you'd like to chat about.
Anyone? All right. Anything else they had, Jacob?
I don't think so, so our next meeting will be public hearing, April twenty-second. It will not be nearly as long as the last public hearing, I think it'll be much easier petitions, it will not be nearly as late, uh, uh, late on this next one. So our next one will, I think our, the best, the best thing about the next one will be meeting Urbetta and will, Urbetta in person. And, and just sharing some time in person together.
All right, thank you.
Very good.
Seeing nothing else, we need a motion to adjourn.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it and be safe everyone.
Thanks everyone.
See y'all soon.